Good afternoon, and I am just so glad that everyone's tuned in and this is here for our Board of Ed Business Meeting. If you are online and you want to send comments to us in writing, it's boe@wcps.k12.md.us. The same suffix that we always use, and then we'll be able to address those comments individually. We're gonna already be a little bit out of order. We're gonna, we do have a quorum in the meeting, it's called "The Order," but we're gonna do the pledge when our little pledger gets here from Fountain Rock. So, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda. Second. Second. All those in favor? Thank you. And the multitude of minutes that we need to be approved?
Yes, ma'am. President Zentmeyer, I move for the approval of work session minutes dated March 4th, 2025.
Do I have a motion? Second.
We had the motion.
All those in favor?
The approval of closed session open portion minutes dated March 4th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous.
Move for the approval of closed session minutes dated March 4th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All, all those in favor? Unanimous.
The approval of the closed session open portion minutes dated March 11th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Daphne, it goes out of favor, yes.
Those are from session.
Okay. It passes unanimously.
The approval of closed session minutes dated March 18th, 2025.
Second. Second. All those in favor?
And finally, I move for the approval of business meeting minutes dated March 18th, 2025.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? We have a lot of moving parts today, so just bear with me. Let's go ahead and move into old business with the approval of the second reading of proposed policy JHCG.
The Board of Education approved the first reading of proposed policy JHCG at its public business meeting on March 28th, 2025. The policy committee posted a notice on board docs and the school system's website seeking comments from the public on the proposed policy. No comments were received. The committee is now recommending the Board of Education approve the second reading of proposed policy JHCG.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
President Zentmeyer moved to approve the second reading of proposed policy JHCG entitled "Telehealth Policy for Students."
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? Okay. We'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Unanimously.
The Board of Education approved the first reading of proposed changes to policy DGA/ DGB and the proposed rescission of policy DGF at its public business meeting on March 18th, 2025. The policy committee posted a notice on board docs and the school system's website seeking comments. No comments were received. The committee is now recommending the Board of Education approve the second reading of proposed changes to policy DGA/ DGB and the proposed rescission of policy DGF.
President Zentmeyer, I move to approve the second reading of proposed changes to policy DGA/ DGB entitled "Authorized Signature Check Writing Services" and the proposed rescission of policy DGF entitled "Approval or Signing Authority."
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll move to the vote. Those in favor? Unanimous. Moving on to the second reading of proposed changes to administrative regulation DFAR.
The Board of Education approved the first reading of proposed changes to administrative regulation DFAR at its public business meeting on March 18th, 2025. The policy committee posted a notice on board docs and the school system's website seeking comments from the public. No comments were received. The committee is now recommending the Board of Education approve the second reading of proposed changes to administrative regulation DFAR.
Do I have a motion?
President Zentmeyer moved to approve the second reading of proposed changes to administrative regulation DFAR entitled "Guidelines for Classification and Use of Fund Balance Reserves."
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Moving to the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Which brings us to new business and our consent agenda.
Good afternoon, President Zentmeyer, members of the Board, Dr. Sobin. Today I have sixteen items for review. These items were reviewed by our purchasing review committee and are being recommended for approval, and staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Do I have a motion?
President Zentmeyer moved to approve the awards, renewals, and procurements as presented in the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Yes. I want to talk about some of these things. So, we have the French Core Resource. Is that, for world languages, is that a program? Is that a computer program? Is that a?
Textbooks.
Textbooks, okay. Fifty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty cents. Milk, which is something we need. Annual cost of eight hundred thousand dollars.
Approximately, yeah.
Yeah. Two servers. So, where, are they here? The server's here? Yes?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Two hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. The electrical distribution replacement at Hancock Middle High. One thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and one hundred and forty, one thou-
One million.
I'll get it. Give me a chance. One million, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty dollars.
Correct.
Yes. Door hardware replacement at various schools, three hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Unit prices for operable wall system preventive maintenance. Selected kitchen upgrades at Williamsport High School, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars. Dental program administration renewal, United Concordia Companies. That comes from the self-insurance fund. And for two years, that's approximately six million dollars. Design build fire alarm replacement at Clear Spring Middle, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Same thing for North High, three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Some painting of various schools, one hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars, and then four, forty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. Diagnostic and interim student assessments, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Juniper service support and licensing. Can you tell me what that is for? The Skyline Technology Solutions, the Juniper?
Mr. Allen will be able to address that much better than I.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Good evening, President Zentmeyer, Dr. Sobin, and the Board. The Juniper is a subscription that provides updates to the switches, keeps them current, security-wise and that kind of thing. This is a cost that we have to pay unfortunately for this type of equipment every year.
But it's very important that we have it.
It is.
Absolutely. Okay. Masonry, masonry repairs at various schools, forty-six thousand, seven hundred, thirty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-three. And the last, portable bathroom renovations at South High, eighty-one thousand, three hundred dollars. So now the taxpayers can see that we're, how we're spending their tax dollars, and we're spending them very wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other discussion or questions? Let's move to the vote. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Brings us to our second approval procurement, and we have lots of people to present this, so go right ahead.
Yeah. So today we also have a, we also have the Medical Pharmacy Administration Stop Loss Insurance and Vision as a procurement item. I have Ms. Baker from HR, Mr. Prue, our COO, and Ms. Hirschman from Gallagher Benefits Consulting. And we're able to address any questions you may have on this procurement.
President Zentmeyer moved to approve the award for medical inactive and pre-65 retiree prescription drug programs to Cigna for a three-year contract period with the option of one additional two-year period. The administration fee for the services, twenty-three thirty-four per employee per month for active and eleven thirty-four per employee per month for medical-only Medicare post-retirees. The annual administrative, administrative cost is nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars. Move to approve the award for post-
Dr. Zentmeyer.
Oh, do they have to be separate?
Separate motions.
Do I have a second? That's all right. I appreciate it. The second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. All right. Second motion.
I move to approve the award for post-65 retiree prescription drug program to CVS Employers Health for a three-year contract period and implement in January 1st to correspond with Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services CMS subsidies. With the opinion of one additional two-year period, the administration fee is nine dollars and twenty-eight cents per employee per month, and an annualize is two hundred thousand, four, two hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three for post-65 retirees.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, wait. Do you have any discussion first? Anybody want to ask any questions? Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous. And finally?
There's two more. Move, oh, go ahead.
To approve the award of Vision Program Administration to IMED for a three-year contract period with the option of a one additional two-year period. The administration fee is forty-one cents per employee per month with an annual administration cost of twenty thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion on this motion? Seeing now, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor? It was unanimously adopted. And the fourth and final procurement.
Move to approve the award for six hundred thousand dollar specific stop-loss administration to Cigna for a one-year contract period at the cost of thirty-five dollars and twenty-four cents per employee per month. The estimated cost is one million, two hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Question? Just for the, the team here. How, how are we seeing increase from the years past? Has there been an increase, a large increase, is about the same? Kind of give us an idea of what we're looking at.
So, as Board may recall, and as, you know, members, folks that have been on the Finance Committee have received updates as well. If we go back, I think back to eight years ago when I began my position, we were currently at a deficit balance in our self-insurance fund. Through subsequent increases and then really a bit of a lull in expenses through the pandemic, we were able to materialize a significant surplus to the self-insurance fund. We've been holding that back over the last couple of years. Sort of, we felt that the, the balance was a little heavier than we should have and higher than what would be called for through standard norms and through revised board policy. So we're really kind of thinking about a stagecoach running downhill. The expenses we're trying to run, we're trying to hold them back with modest increases. As you know, in this year's budget, you have a ten percent premium increase proposed. Healthcare inflation continues to run, and Ms. Hirschman can, can probably say more about this, but easily in the seven to ten percent range is what we're seeing on healthcare inflation. Secondary to that, the growth in the GLP-1 weight loss drugs has been significant, and the team has been working with our association members and the Healthcare Committee about opportunities to mitigate that risk. You know, for the most recent reporting period, the month of March, those prescription drugs alone cost the plan four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. So that's an area that we're watching and we're concerned about. What you're approving today is the administration of all of our plans, and for, as a reminder to our Board members and to our members at home, our, our community members at home, the Board of Education is self-insured, which means we pay actual claims. Whatever the actual claims are from our employees and their dependents, that's the actual cost that the Board pays, plus the administrative fees that the third-party administrators will apply for doing that work and processing our claims. As opposed to being fully insured, where a vendor would look at our prior year claims and say, "I think you're going to be at fifty million dollars in claims." But if we only had forty-five million in that year, we would still pay fifty million dollars, and that, that third-party administrator would, would pocket the five million. So that's the difference of why we've always chosen to be on a self-insured plan as opposed to a fully insured plan, because we now are more in control of the claims and the actual cost. I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, just, I'm just seeing across the board, a lot of, a lot of organizations are seeing large increases, you know, and I know that, you know, we've, we've tried to hold our own, you know, and I know, I first came on, we had some concerns on the Board, you know, eleven years ago, and it seems like, it just seems like we're kind of getting to the point where we're starting to see that concern grow again because of the increases. And I know we've tried to do the best we could with our, with our employees. I don't know how long that's gonna, we can maintain that, you know, with the rising costs of, of the medical field that we're seeing, so.
I expect we'll get some relief this year in the area of the GLP-1s. We're also going to see relief because one of the class of drugs, the, the class is known as biologics. Some of those patents are running out, and now there are biosimilars, which will be available to our employees at much reduced cost. That's going to save the plan as well. So, you know, hope is not a strategy, but we're hopeful.
Yeah.
Based on a number of the plans that we're putting together, that we'll be able to still do right by our taxpayers and our employees.
And we're actually, we're going out and doing comps on all these when we're, we're looking at new programs, and we're doing those, those for the, the people of Forchton County, right?
Absolutely. Yeah. What you're approving tonight was a full procurement, but then evaluated the cost of the potential claims based on the discounts that that third-party administrator has with various doctors and pharmacies and hospitals and so forth. So they can see the full breadth of the claims and, and expect, and then we can annualize what those costs of those claims would be. So we're not only looking at the cost to administer the plan, but what would be the cost of the claims themselves. On the prescription drug side, high-level evaluations also, but also to include the drug rebates that are available from the drug manufacturers are factored back in as well.
I mean, I think that we have done, you know, a good service to our employees through the years and holding as much as our own as we can, so I thank you for, you know, doing all the work that you do to keep that cost low for everybody, so it means a lot to the employees, I'm sure. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Questions? We'll move to the vote. All those in favor? They unanimously passed. Thank you.
Yep, that's it.
Okay. I just received word that our, our, the person who is going to do the pledge for us tonight has requested to do it at the next meeting. So unless I can beg one of our Clear Spring students to lead us in the pledge, do we have a volunteer from Clear Spring? Hooray! Do, do it together. Can you do it together? Oh, yeah. Do it together, all three of you. This is my favorite part of the evening, so I'm so glad that you're going to do this for me. Thank you.
Nope. One doesn't want to go. Okay. Here she comes.
We're ready when you are.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God just lead us and guide us tonight so that all the decisions that we make are the very best possible to stay an absolute success for our students. Thank you. You may be seated. Do you mind telling us your names?
I'm Charlie Bracken.
Hi.
Eliza.
Oh. I can't tell you how much you are appreciated tonight. Do you want to tell us anything about Clear Spring Elementary?
I think it has a lot of opportunity, and I've enjoyed it a lot.
Good. Who's your teacher?
Mr. Alkire.
Nice, nice.
Do either of you have a favorite subject?
I like ELA.
Thank you. To be called on in the middle of sitting there and say, "Please come forward," when you were just going to watch is a big deal, and I appreciate you so much. Thanks so much. All right. We're going to jump right back in. I really meant it when I said there were moving parts tonight, with an approval of a donation. And I will let you take it from there.
All right. Good evening, or good afternoon, President Zentmeyer, Dr. Sobin, and Board members. I am requesting approval of a gift of nine thousand, seven hundred, four dollars and forty cents from the Boonsboro Athletic Booster Incorporated. This donation will be used to purchase cheer jackets, pants, jerseys, and new tumbling mats for the Boonsboro High School cheer team.
Do I have a motion?
President Zentmeyer moved to approve a gift of nine thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and forty cents from the Boonsboro Athletic Boosters to be used for the Boonsboro High School cheer team.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I do want to point out that I wasn't the cheer coach at Boonsboro for a year, and how we could find a replacement. So with that, we'll move into the vote. All those in favor? They unanimously carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Zentmeyer, Dr. Sobin, members of the Board. I'm here this evening to ask for your approval of a donation of a total of ninety-two thousand and twenty dollars to support Landon's Project.
Do I have a motion?
I do approve the, a donation of ninety-two thousand, twenty dollars for Landon's Project.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
Do we know where this might come from?
We sure do. This came from a series of donors. The Puzzle Derby fundraiser at the Maryland Theater, the Rotary Club of Hagerstown, the Ark of Washington County and the Fletcher Foundation, Middletown Valley Bank, Lee and Rosalie Roudnauer Foundation, the Joan Bowman Foundation, Benito Vatalana, the Community Foundation, and the, and Rochelle Jacobson Trust.
Excellent. Thank you to all the donors.
Any other questions? Clarification? Okay. Let's move to the vote. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. The approval of another amount from the Giant Feeding School Kids Program.
Good afternoon, President Zentmeyer, Dr. Sobin, members of the Board. Once again, this year, we have participated in the Giant Feeding School Kids Roundup Program. From January 1st through March 31st, Martins, the local Martins stores participated in asking customers to round up their total bill. The initiative this year raised twenty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-three cents. I would like to express our appreciation and thank our local Martin's Stores and the Giant Company for their continued support of the WCPS Food and Nutrition Services. If approved by the Board, these funds will be used for purchasing extra food to be sent home with students for weekends this summer and to offset accrued debt to students that become eligible for free and reduced meals throughout the year. So with that, I'm requesting that the Board approve the donation in the amount of twenty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-three cents from the Giant Feeding School Kids Roundup Program.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
President Zentmeyer. I move to approve the donation in the amount of twenty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-three cents from the Giant Feeding School Kids Program to the Washington County Public Schools Food and Nutrition Services.
Do I have a second? Second. Any discussion? Except that we're eternally grateful. Thank you so much. All those who are in favor? It passes unanimously.
To round up your grocery.
Sorry. We thank the customers as well.
I do. Thank you. And now, for the moment we've all been waiting for. Before Mr. Prue starts, the Board is prepared to approve our FY26 general fund budget this evening. It also needs to be noted that we were recently made aware of a potential change in our funding from Washington County Government. The FY26 general fund budget as presented this evening includes two point two four million from the Board of Washington County Commissioners' Capital Improvement Program Funds. That funding is allocated to purchase replacement school buses for our transportation fleet. While the Board of County Commissioners did not have the FY26 budget listed as a discussion item on their agenda late, agenda late this morning, their chief finance- item on their agenda late, agenda late this morning, their chief financial officer emailed our chief operating officer and informed him that the buses may be cut from our budget. In light of that development, the board acknowledges that our approved FY '26 general fund budget may need to be revised at a future business meeting pending formal action by the Washington County Commissioners. Chief Financial Officer, take it away.
Taking it off to me. Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer, members of the board. We've spent some considerable time, it feels like, over the last several weeks talking about the budget, lots of questions, lots of numbers. Staff is presenting to you today sort of a variation on the draft budget that the board adopted back in February. This variation includes items that the board reached consensus on during last week's budget work session. In your packets and also available publicly on board docs is a synopsis of the changes to the draft budget with the additions and subtractions. And staff is here to answer any questions board has as you work through this adoption.
Motion?
Call for a motion.
President Zentmeyer.
I motion to approve the Board of Education's draft physical year 2026 general fund operating budget with the proposed edits from the April 8th, 2025 work session as the Board of Education's approved physical year 2026 general fund operating budget.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, let's open it up to discussion. Dr. Zentmeyer?
I have some amendments that I'd like to put forward, one at a time.
Thank you.
I move to amend this budget by adding the position of supervisor of equity and excellence at a cost of $140,000 and to reduce the amount to be allowed to the other post-employment benefits by $140,000.
Do I have a second? Seeing the motion fails.
My next motion, Madam President, I move to amend the budget to restore it to the earlier proposed 15 school safety and security assistant positions at a cost of $942,900 and to cover this by eliminating the Connect Ed grades 1 to 6, 1 to 5 program costing $609,000 with the balance of $333,900 taken from the allocation to the other post-employment benefits.
Do I have a second? Seeing the motion fails.
And my last motion, I move to add to this budget the earlier proposed 15 school and safety security assistant positions at a cost of $942,900 and cover this addition by taking $942,900 from the allocated, allocation to the other post-employment benefits.
Do I have a second? Seeing the motion fails. Any other motions?
I, I do have one. I move to amend the motion to increase the regular substitute teacher daily wage rate by $10 per full day and $5 per half day for a total cost of $162,000 and reduce the amount of increase to the other post-employment benefit liability by an equal amount.
Do I have a, second?
Sorry, jumped ahead. Sorry, second.
Okay, let's open this up for discussion. Does anybody have anything they want to say?
I, I want to ask a question. Is this across the board or is just the lower paid?
The lower paid. I'm sorry, you answer that.
The regular, the regular substitutes, so that would be the lower paid.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Okay, read the motion again, please.
To amend the motion to increase.
Oh, wait, did some, did somebody have a question? No. Okay.
So increase regular substitute teacher daily wage rate by $10 per full day and $5 per half day for a total cost of $162,000 and reduce the amount of increase to the OPEB liability fund by an equal amount.
All those in favor? It passes unanimously. All right, back to the main motion with the amended motion. Is there, are there any other amendments to the motion? Okay, let's read it one more time, just so every, well, we're making a motion to approve the, go ahead.
Okay. Sorry. President Zentmeyer, make a motion to approve the Board of Education's draft physical year 2026 general fund budget with the proposed edits from the April 8th, 2025 work session at the board, as the Board of Education's approved 2026 general fund operating budget with the amended motion that was just approved.
All right. All those in favor? It passes unanimously. Would you bring?
Thank you.
We're done.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you to.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
Yeah, I mean, for all that you've done. I mean, the staff that was involved, you know, you guys have wrote really many crunching numbers for, for months. Jeff being the lead on that, I appreciate that. But the staff behind you three that have really been the counterpart to kind of bring this all together, you know, the board thanks you and, and your staff, so please take that back and let them know how much we appreciate. Because having new board members asking questions, and it's important that they learn this too, and for us who've been here for a while, get to hear some other things and other points of views, it's good. And so I thank you for taking the time and really, you know, digging in and getting those answers for us. So thank you all very much. We appreciate that.
We're happy to be of service.
Thank you.
You went above and beyond. You're really good. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Dr. Webster is approaching with personnel actions.
Good evening again, Dr. Zentmeyer, Dr. Sobin, and members of the board. As discussed earlier during closed session, there are several staff changes for your review, and I ask for your approval at this time of this evening's personnel actions.
Do I have a motion?
President Zentmeyer. I move to approve the personnel actions dated Tuesday, April 15th, 2025, as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All, any discussion? All those in favor? Pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards, for coming to tell us about what happened in Annapolis.
Yes, board members, this is the final report with regard to the 2025 legislative session. As you know, the session ended just over a week ago, and the governor has the bills before him that passed. I think it was just under 900 bills that he'll be giving consideration. He set a number of dates to sign the bills between now and May 20th, and so still a little bit more to come. All of the bills that I'm going to be mentioning to you have not yet been signed by the governor but have been approved by the, by the legislature. As you know, throughout the session, the two big issues were the budget as well as adjustments to the blueprint. As you're well aware, you just took action on your budget, so I won't belabor the point with the state budget, but they did close the budget deficit that was in excess of $3 billion. They accomplished that through a series of tax increases, increased fees, as well as some cuts as well. One thing to be aware of, there, with the ever-changing landscape in Washington DC with the federal level, there are some trigger points that the legislature and the governor have agreed. If the state reaches those trigger points or changes happening in Washington, they will consider having a special session in the fall to see what adjustments may need to be made to deal with that. So just be aware that what we have is final, but I guess nothing's final until it's truly final. With regard to the blueprint, as you know, the governor proposed a series of funding delays as well as reductions aimed at helping the state address its budget deficit. The House passed its bill to adjust the blueprint and basically restored many of the reductions and changes that the governor had proposed. The Senate then passed its own version, and as you might expect, it was different than the House's version, going the other direction again as, as the pendulum went back and forth. Ultimately, the bill went to a conference committee and a compromise was, was reached. The bullet points there on the slide basically let you know where the compromise was reached and where it left us. The per pupil funding amount was left intact. That was good news for Washington County. As you all know, you had more than $5 million additional than what you expected that you would have. The planned increases in funding for concentration of poverty, COP, or community schools, those were left intact and restored from what the governor had proposed. And a compromise was reached with regard to collaborative time and the implementation of that. The funding for that collaborative time will remain in place, and there'll be a two-year pause on that. And then, beginning in FY '29, that will begin to increase again as was planned. So more to come with regard to that, but that overall was good news for you, as you know, in just taking that action on your budget. Few more dollars for you to, to invest in the community and its students. Wanted to bring you up to date as to the final status of a bill that I mentioned to you in my March update. That was House Bill 161. And what that bill, if you remember, initially would have done, would have, would have required the State Department of Education to work together with the State Department of Health to develop a comprehensive health education framework. And then, local boards of education would create age-appropriate curriculum and so forth. That bill went through tremendous change. It was approved. We did, on your behalf, submit testimony to the local delegation in opposition to this bill as it was proposed. What came through, as I said, was quite different. Essentially, it, it codified the process now for developing curriculum. It applies now to all curriculum, not just health. As it was introduced, it would have just impacted health. And basically, the local education agencies or the boards will set their curriculum in accordance with the state's standards, as is the case now. The state will review curriculum at the local level, address any issues, discrepancies that they have, and ultimately, if the local boards don't address any discrepancies that are there, they could lose some state funding. So basically, again, no major changes, it just codified what the process is in place, and the opt-outs that parents now have the opportunity to elect, to utilize for certain subject areas and things that they don't want their children to be a part of, they can still pull that out, as is the current thing. So no real change, just codified everything, as I said. Number of bills that we submitted testimony in support of did not get through. The focus of the legislature, as I said earlier, was the budget as well as the blueprint adjustments. The Safe Schools Fund Bill, if you recall, that simply would have allowed funds that were not expended by other districts across the state to be reallocated to districts who could use them in a given year. That's been out there for a couple of years now and has, has not gotten through. Lot of discussion on a number of bills with regard to the juvenile sex offender registry and communication with regard to districts communicating with each other when a student's not to be in school for in-person instruction due to being on that registry and so forth. None of those bills got through, but there is a, there was some acknowledgement that there isn't, there is some issues there with regard to communication, and I think some general agreement that that needs to be addressed in the future. And so we anticipate that they'll be talking and working on that and probably see legislation in the future to address that issue. And then after all of the discussion about student cellphone use, none of those bills got through. So we're right back to where we were, as I've mentioned and as you all are well aware, but for the public's benefit, our board does have a policy in place that prohibits students from utilizing electronic devices during instructional time. Most of those bills simply would have required that all the boards of education across the state have such policy. So they would have had no impact on us, but I think folks were a little bit surprised that nothing came through on that. I think most people are in agreement, it's hard to learn when you're on your phone. Finally, I wanted to share some bills that we haven't mentioned previously but that were approved by the legislature that I thought might be of interest to you and the public. The first one is House Bill 56, and basically, it allows, as funds are available for the state, to set up a program where school districts could utilize food that's grown on local farms and things. Think good for our students. I know there's been some comments at previous meetings about the need to have fresh fruits and vegetables in our schools, and what better way to do that than to get them from farms right here in Washington County? So we'll see how that program is developed and works out. The other, I know that this board has a keen interest in improving attendance and reducing chronic absenteeism. House Bill 879 establishes a task force to look at that from a statewide basis with a report due by the end of the calendar year. And then one other bill that I thought I would mention that I didn't include on this slide was House Bill 478, and let's hope that our community doesn't have to, to utilize this, but it authorizes Hagerstown Community College police officers to be called into action in the event of an imminent threat to life, property, or public safety outside of their campus. So just provide some extra support in the need of a, of community situation, perhaps a situation in the school where there be a few more hands on deck. So that, I believe, is a good, good thing. As I mentioned, the governor's office now is reviewing the bills, and they'll be signed, and perhaps changes made to some. But once all the dust has settled, our legal team, we will plan to provide you with a report outlining all the bills that were approved and signed by the governor that would impact education here in Washington County. So with that, are there any questions?
I have a question. What was the main opposition for House Bill 1265? To me, it seems kind of common sense that we want to protect our students in school, especially from reportable offenses. So what was the main reason?
In, in watching a lot of the hearings on that bill, most of the commentary in opposition to that had to do with the perceived or real prison, or school-to-prison pipeline, and there are those that feel like having police in the schools leads to more arrests of students and so forth. And so those were the, the major concerns that I saw in, in watching those hearings.
I do want to thank you for all your hard work during this legislative session. It's been wonderful to have such complete updates, and you are appreciated.
Thank you, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank Ms. Brown, Mrs. Ram, and Dr. Sobin, as well as the members of the LRT. It's a team effort, so thank you.
Thank you. Give the reports to the board. I'll start with curriculum and instruction, as is my desire. We meet in the schools so that we have an opportunity to meet the schools, and we were at Paramount this week. And I have to give huge thanks, not only to Principal Jenny Hammond, but to their assistant principal, Jen Pine, and the lead teacher, Rachel Crane. They were very good to answer all of our questions, but those fourth graders had the top MCAPs in the county, and we are top of the state. So I am just thrilled to be able to report that. I hope it's not too early to do that. Our supervisor of world language, Paula Moore, presented the new French resource that we voted on tonight, and the coordinator of early education, Kelly Longerbeam, gave us a pre-K program update. The next meeting is at 10:30 at Salem on May 7th, and we'll start with grading policies. So the next report is facilities?
We have not met, so we have never reported.
All right. Finance?
We have a meeting scheduled for May the 13th at 8:30 in the morning.
Human resources?
We will be meeting April 29th at 1:00 PM here in the boardroom.
And policy?
Yeah, in addition to what we just discussed, just voted on for second reads tonight, you may notice that noticeably absent from today's agenda was the second read to policy, whatever letters it is, the one that discusses public comment. So we, yes, thank you, KD. So we, we heard the, the public's concerns, and, you know, some other board members had some concerns as well, and, you know, we're, we're taking all, all comment into consideration and try to come up with something that, that really does improve it for, for everyone who would like to be able to, to speak as well. So with that being said, we also will not be meeting in May, and our next meeting will be in June, so it may be back on the agenda for a first read in June. It may not. It may not. So, you can keep an eye out on that, but just know that the discussion has not gone away. It's just going to be pushed back a little bit here to June.
As far as future agenda items, we have Dr. Kahaneck and his team from Boonsborough coming, and a presentation on student discipline and update with suggestions so that we can move forward to see how we can facilitate healthy environments for all of our students. If you have any items that you want included on the agenda, please see a member of the Agenda Planning Committee. We need to take a brief recess until our recognitions begin at 5 o'clock. And then, after those recognitions, we'll continue with the regular meeting. Okay? All right. Thank you.
And board members. This evening, we're going to begin with our new 2025 Carson Scholars. These students were nominated and selected to receive the Carson Scholars Award this school year, meeting the academic achievement and community service requirements. This is a national award that these students were selected out of thousands of applicants. We're going to begin with fourth grade student at Cascade Elementary School, Jamie Martin. Fifth grade student at Sharpsburg Elementary School, Georgia Callaway. Eighth grade student at Smithburg Middle School, Jonathan Dempsher. Then, we're going to move to our 2025 recognized Carson Scholars. As a previously awarded Carson Scholar, these students have the opportunity to apply for recognition each year through 12th grade. They have continued to meet the academic achievement and community service requirements, resulting in their recognized Carson Scholars Award for this school year. Like to begin with sixth grade student at Smithburg Middle School, Maggie Herbst. And 11th grade student at North Hagerstown High School, Madeline Mills. I'd like to also recognize two students who were unable to attend this evening. Ninth grade student at North Hagerstown High School, Justin Grabenstein, and 12th grade student at Boonsborough High School, Hunter Lau. Congratulations to all our Carson Scholars.
This time, I'll invite Adam Perry, our supervisor of CTE. He'll help us recognize students who competed at the Skills USA State Championship and earned a gold medal.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, President Zemeyer, Dr. Savine, members of the board. Each year, CTE students compete in Skills USA competition. And tonight, we're going to recognize our state champions in four categories. So, in our commercial UAS drones, we have Jackson Bear. Next, we have Adam Oats. In our early childhood education, we have Kenzie Sullivan. In our community action project, we have Summer Lynn Laflame. In our health knowledge bowl, we have Kumari Winston, Tara Parks, Danya Asif, and Jamia These are your Skills USA State Champions.
And Dr. Zemeyer, members of the board, under my update, I have just two announcements. April is National School Library Month, and I'd like to take a moment to recognize our school library media specialists. School libraries, yes, school libraries are very exciting. School libraries and media centers are hubs of learning, creativity, and innovation. Our library media specialists play an important role in helping to prepare our students for a world that is constantly changing. They champion literacy, they inspire innovative problem solving, they teach our students to be positive digital citizens, and so much more. I want to thank all of our library media specialists for their dedication, their expertise, and their daily impact on our school communities. I hope our schools will join me in showing your appreciation for library media specialists and the incredible work they do each and every day. Finally, I'd like to make just a quick calendar reminder for this month. Spring break is just around the corner. WCPS schools and offices will be closed this Friday, April the 18th, through Monday, April the 21st. I hope everyone enjoys an extended weekend and can spend much quality time with your family and loved ones over this break. Another note on the calendar, on Monday, April the 28th, is also a two-hour early dismissal for students. President Zemeyer, members of the board, that concludes my update.
Thank you. Before I forget, I made a mistake earlier. CNI is meeting at Smithburg Elementary. So, this brings us to public comment. Before we begin, I want to call, before I call individuals forward, I'd like to read from Policy KD as it stands right now. Each person wishing to address the Board of Education is encouraged, but not required, to sign up prior to the meeting and may address any topic concerning Washington County public schools except personnel or student matters, which clearly identify an Public Schools, except personnel or student matters, which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Those wishing to address the board and who do not sign up prior to the start of the meeting will be required to sign a log. That's for minutes. Each person may speak up to five minutes. A timer will be used for each speaker. Once the speaker begins, the timer will be started and a green light will be displayed. When the speaker has 30 seconds left, there are allotted time, a yellow light will be displayed, and when the speaker's five minutes have elapsed, a tone will sound and a red light will be displayed on the timer indicating that the speaker's time has ended. At this time, I would like to call up our first speaker, Jenny Robinson.
Can we bring the tables out before we do that?
They're going to use the mic.
Just kidding.
Good afternoon, Presidents Zentmeyer, Dr. Sobine, board members. I appreciate you letting me come to speak. My goal today is really to come and introduce myself to you all. I am your local online counselor for Grand Canyon University. I am a proud Washington County resident. I have three daughters, two of whom are at Boonsborough, and one of whom is at HCC, and one that was a cheerleader for four years, so that made me happy to hear that earlier. We provide online learning for working professionals. A little bit about me, is in addition to being in the school system because of my daughters, I was also a substitute teacher and an HHT instructor for years, so I am very passionate about teaching in the school system, especially here in Washington County. My role as the university development counselor for Washington County is to provide teachers and staff in the school system the ability to further their education online with a flexible, you know, you could work it around your work schedule curriculum. We are a fully accredited private Christian university, and I just wanted to come tonight and introduce myself to everyone, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Lena Williams. Is Lena Williams here? Holly Fairley. Holly, you're going to have to tilt it down a little bit, I think.
Good evening, Nina, thank you. This is, I think, maybe my third time.
Could you speak into it?
Yeah, you're going to have to move closer.
There you go.
I'm sorry, thank you. I think this might be my third time coming to the board with similar issues. I'm here to advocate on behalf of students, teachers, staff, administrators. I am Holly Fairley, I'm a pre-K teacher at Clear Spring Elementary. I've been with the district for 16 years, and I was here last year with many serious concerns behavior-wise, and was told that, well, it was all passed along because it'll be a new learning environment. Well, the problems are still there, and they're exponentially worse, and some new ones thrown in the mix. More and more children are coming to us with serious mental, emotional, social, psychological issues, traumatic issues, that are far beyond what a gen ed educator should be expected to deal with, or can't, we're not qualified to even begin to deal with that. We're being traumatized. The kids in our classroom are exposed to this trauma. There is chaos happening daily. I invite all of you, come to the school, you don't need to come into any classroom, just sit in the hallway and see what is happening, listen to the walkies. The disruption of the learning environment is like I've never seen before. It is just, it's sad. So much loss of instructional time. Fear. It is not a safe learning environment. Teachers and students are wondering what's going to happen next, and when will it happen? And it's usually not too far away, and sometimes it's multiple times during the day. There are physical attacks, both on adults and children. Hit, kicked, scratched, stabbed with pencils, run out with scissors. I mean, if I acted like kids, I'd be flipping chairs, throwing things, running at you, and expect a little prize, maybe. There's destruction of property, both teachers and students, their things are being destroyed, rooms are being trashed, classrooms are being evacuated to hallways or teammates' classrooms, which, again, disrupts the learning environment, not just for the one class, but for others. There's elopements from the room, from the building, which is not safe. There are staff that have to watch these students, of course, got to lay eyes on them. Sometimes there's more than one staff member that has to be there because we're guarding hallways, because we don't know which way they're going to run. Or maybe their kid just walks out and refuses to go into class and wants to stay in the hallway for a couple hours, or entering other rooms, just taking things and walking back out if the door is not locked. It just, I won't even go into the cussing and stuff because it's common practice these days. It's, and I'm not talking about fourth and fifth grade, I'm pre-K, kindergarten, and when pre-K is saying, this child has a serious problem, we need to get them help, we're really not doing them a service by just saying, oh, we're going to just see how they do next year, or again. Well, it was a rough year, we're going to see how they do next year. They, they need help, the students that are sitting in that classroom are being traumatized. I walked into one classroom and I was like, it's just, it's heartbreaking. It really is heartbreaking, and I don't know what the solution is other than finding an alternative for the ones that are causing the disruption, so we can get back to some kind of normalcy where it is a safe learning environment. That's Education 101. There is no learning happening when it's not a safe environment. And it's not just Clear Spring, please know, I have friends across the county. It's happening everywhere. And what is being taught? Students are seeing that other kids are, well, they're allowed to behave like that, I guess, just because that's who they are, yet others are held to be accountable. Are we expected to, oh, once we're attacked, then welcome the child right back into our I'm heartbroken at the situation, and I don't have answers. I just hope you all are looking at some solutions that can possibly help the teachers. Parents, ask your child, what is happening in your classroom? If it's great, that's awesome, and I will tell you this year, I'm loving it, good things. But yet, I'm stepping in, helping others with like former students and things, and it's, it is traumatic.
Thank you so much. And if you can just email that to us, we can take a look at the rest of what you wanted to say.
That's most of it, but they're just, we need help out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did call me, right? Okay, so I noticed you moved the timer over there. Touche, Madam President. Very, very sneaky of you. So I heard, I don't know where Dave Williams is tonight, but I've heard in the past him complaining about budgetary issues with WCPS, and I learned earlier today, shocking news that you guys aren't getting new school buses because B OCC, Washington County Board of County Commissioners, pulled back funding. It's actually not 100% their fault. West Moore has actually cut $9 million worth of reimbursement money to Washington County. I don't know if it's to punish a county that never votes for his particular party, or what the reasoning is, but we're not getting $9 million from the budget, now we're not getting $2.5 million for school buses. So my son is on a WCPS bus to and from Maryland school for the deaf, and I thank WCPS for doing that because it saves a heck of a lot of traffic in the mornings. And I'm just very concerned that that money was pulled away from WCPS and that we are now looking at further cuts. I did want to point out a few things, though. For years, the Board of County Commissioners has been spending money by issuing bonds and deficit spending every single year, and calling bond sales revenue. So we're borrowing money on credit cards and saying that it's income, and anybody that lives in the real world knows that's completely insane, and now we have hundreds of millions of dollars in debt and no rainy day fund. And guess what's happening? We're losing funding from West Moore and from the Democrats in Annapolis, so we're going to get less money for Washington County, Washington County Public Schools, on a whole host of issues. I don't even know about roads, probably going to be horrible with roads as well. Long story short, because we've been deficit spending and recklessly spending money on frivolous things like owning a golf course and rental properties, competing with local businesses, which government has no business, competing with private citizens in the marketplace, because of this crazy spending and throwing parties all the time, we had a Groundhog Day party this, this past year, I don't know if you know that, but on Groundhog Day in February, it was actually celebrated on the 31st, we had a party that was put on by this guy, Jonathan Horowitz. He's essentially in charge of the Party Planning Committee, he calls it the, he's in charge of economic development. This young kid actually just throws parties, and I think we're having one for eggs on May 7th, eggs, an egg party. So we're pissing away a lot of money that could go to other things, and just for the record, this guy got a 50% pay raise. He went from $98,000 a year to $148,000 a year, just like all the teachers did, right? Oh, no, that's right, we didn't, we didn't give a pay raise to teachers. In fact, I think we've actually had to let go some substitute teachers, and we're looking at cuts as far as payroll goes regarding staffing at WCPS. So anyway, this guy got a 50% pay raise, he makes a buck 48 a year, and he throws parties, and he schedules and plans parties. That is his job title. These sorts of reckless expenditures coming out of the Board of County Commissioners has to stop. It's been going on for years. The person who runs the county is a woman named Michelle Gordon. If you want to Google Michelle Gordon, Jefferson County, West Virginia, or Michelle Gordon, Hickers Town, and just start doing a deep dive into who our county administrator is that actually runs the finances of the county on the day-to-day business, you might find some disturbing information about Michelle Gordon. But long story short, she's running the budget currently right into the ground, and I don't know how to break this to the citizens of Washington County, but you're looking at a tax increase. So property taxes are likely going to have to go up to make up for these shortfalls because instead of having a balanced budget every year, we were spending $20 million in the deficit or so, and just stacking that money up. Now we owe hundreds of millions of dollars, and we are levered up. That means we can't borrow any more money. No rainy day fund, no slush fund, tax increases are coming. As a result of throwing parties for groundhogs and paying people that work in the front office, Michelle Gordon makes $168,000 a year, takes every holiday that there is, this guy gets paid $148,000 a year, and I don't even think he's 30 years old yet, I don't know what he did to deserve that, but again, he got a 50% pay increase this year. The spending is out of control of the Board of County Commissioners, it needs to be reined in, and I think the only way we do that is by replacing the current board with more qualified candidates. Anyway, I yield back the balance of my time.
Thank you. Rachel Breck.
In the entrance of our school is posted Maryland Code, Section 26101. It outlines that a person may not willfully disturb or prevent the orderly conduct of activities, administration, or classes in any educational institution. My fifth grade son quotes this almost every day when I ask how their day at school went, and I hear things like, "A water fountain was broken by a classmate because they were mad," or that my daughter was answering a question and a chair came flying across the room and it landed next to her, or my kindergartner coming home from school with a bruise on her head because a classmate got mad and pushed her because they went a different way outside. I was told by a sub from Friday, this past Friday, that my daughter was crying because she wanted to answer a question, but she couldn't because they were trying to manage the behaviors. She hit her head that day on the sidewalk, that's why she had a bruise on her head. I asked my five-year-old if she was scared at school, she told me that everyone is scared. I asked what was scary, and she said, "When chairs are being thrown around the room, everyone is afraid the chairs will get hurt." I asked if she herself was afraid of getting hurt, sorry, and she said, "No, I am used to it because I get hurt so much." Sorry, she's five. She also told me the other day she would kill herself if I didn't play with her. This is a statement that is said by another student at the school, and she has heard it. Instead of learning 1 plus 1 equals 2 and how to read the word cat, my daughter is learning that abuse is normal, manipulation is okay, and that these behaviors are acceptable in the classroom and her learning environment. I am standing up here to let her know that that learning environment is absolutely unacceptable. I'm telling you on the board that this is unacceptable. I have seen these behaviors with my own eyes, I've heard the manipulation being used as I am a regular substitute at their school. Just like Ms. Fairley said earlier, I have also witnessed these behaviors, and it is out of control. What is happening at Clear Spring Elementary and the county is unacceptable. The words fix it are used by many teachers when correcting behaviors in the classroom. I am telling you, the board, to please fix it.
Amy Anderson.
Hello, I'm additionally here on behalf of Clear Spring Elementary School, and as a parent of a kindergartner, throughout this school year, my child has continually come home from school with accounts of behavioral concerns, classroom disruptions, and safety incidents. Multiple behavioral students have had continuous outbursts during instructional time and when transitioning between classes. These outbursts range from running around the classroom, using explicit language, screaming and yelling, pushing, hitting, stomping other students to the point of injury and throwing objects. Paraprofessional support personnel have been added to the classrooms with little change to the behavior or the frequency of the incidents. School resource officers have still been involved. As a response to these incidents, the other children in the classroom are removed, not the student causing the disruption, further disrupting their attempts to learn. In addition, there has been apparently no disciplinary action for the behavioral students nor their parents. The students are allowed back in the classroom, sometimes within five to 10 minutes of the incident. Even after the occurrence that a parent may be called, the behavioral student is back in school the following day. My child, who has enjoyed going to school and learning, now does not want to go most mornings. He comes home upset and frustrated each day from the constant disruptions. I hear more accounts of what the bad kids did during the day than the actual content of what he's learning. He's asked to be homeschooled on multiple occasions as a solution to not have to deal with the disruptions. I understand that the behavioral issues are not just Clear Spring, they're at the county as a whole, but they not only affect the well-being of our students, but they impact the overall academic success and overall school atmosphere. They should not be worried about and scared to learn in their classrooms. Instructors should be able to focus on learning, not continuously diffusing volatile situations or children. I was a former substitute teacher in the county, and I've experienced learning and teaching at various levels, from undergraduate, graduate, and professional learning settings, and within the current environment, neither child nor instructor are operating within their full potential. I'm asking you to review and help the teachers and the administration enhance the behavioral management strategies, not only within Clear Spring, but the county as a whole. There needs to be clear disciplinary procedures that are adhered to and enforced. Students are causing constant disruptions, damage to school property that then we have to work into our budget to fix, and harming other students, and this should not be allowed to remain in the classroom without adequate and documented consequences. If the child continues to cause issues, they need to be removed from the main classroom permanently and receive more specialized instruction elsewhere. In the same way that if a child is struggling to read, they're placed in a smaller group where they can receive more one-on-one instruction. The behavioral students can be taught in a separate, smaller-sized classroom with personnel that are specifically trained to deal with these types of issues.
Thank you so much. Carol Mauan.
Good afternoon, Dr. Zentmeyer, Dr. Sobine, and members of the board. I am Carol Mauan, president of the Washington County Teachers Association. First, I extend my thanks to the board's policy committee for its reconsideration of the proposed revisions to Policy KD regarding public comments after the first reading of proposed changes. As I noted in my comments to you in March, the policy's originally, original language stating that individuals, quote, "may address any topic concerning Washington County Public Schools, except personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals" provided enough clarity and expectation. After the March business meeting, I've reviewed the proposed language more closely, then sent you an email with further suggestions, including that you return the time for public comment to the beginning of the business session so that the public can comment on items that items that are coming before the board for deliberation prior to the board members' decisions that are made when voting. In that email, I also proposed a revision to the section of the policy referenced above to further clarify expectations. I suggest that you insert a clause into this sentence of the policy so that it would read, "Speakers may address any topic concerning Washington County public schools," and here's the inserted clause, "that is under the jurisdiction of the elected Board of Education," end of clause, "except personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals." This addition may enable the board to redirect citizens who are commenting about matters that are not under your purview. From my discussions with WCTA members, I know that language that protects the identity of individuals during public comment is very important to employees. However, you may not hear directly from them regarding this matter from this microphone. Why? Because some employees are afraid to publicly speak out because they fear calling attention to themselves in this setting. This is due in part to the tone and allegations of comments that have been allowed in the sessions in the past. I urge this board to enforce current language and to not weaken the current policy's protection of students and staff as you seek to improve the language of Policy KD. Second, I respectfully request that you each adhere to your individual three-minute time limitations to provide comments during the portion of the agenda titled "Board Response to Public Comment," and to use this time as an opportunity to weigh in, respond, and if needed, to correct the record or to clarify whether or not the information that has been shared is, to your understanding, accurate. And finally, I share with you a request that I shared previously with then-President Melissa Williams well over a year ago and that I shared with President Zentmeyer via email this past January. I recommend that you provide a separate agenda time designated for comments from association representatives. As an elected representative of the Unit 1 employees of WCPS, I am not per se a member of the public, but rather an employee serving as an elected representative for WCTA members who make up the majority of the WCPS teaching staff. For my comments to be grouped with those of parents, students, and community members does not correctly represent the relationship that WCTA holds with members of the board, the superintendent, and the WCPS administrative leadership team. The presidents or designees of the Washington County Educational Support Personnel Association and the Washington County Teachers Association, as well as the current Meet and Confer Group that represents the Washington County administrators and supervisors, would be able to speak at a designated time to provide employees' perspectives to the board. This would provide the public a clearer understanding of the relationships between the board and the groups that we each have been elected to serve. Thank you for your consideration of these comments. I look forward to reviewing the next iteration of Policy KD and to hearing your response to this request for a change to the standing agenda for business sessions regarding comments from association representatives. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of the list that I have of signups. Is there anybody else who wanted to speak? Jamie, do you have something for him to sign? Okay. When you leave, you can sign in.
There is a body of knowledge that says the first thing you hear...
Sir, what's your name?
I'll tell you in just a moment, but for this reason, I want you to know I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. That's the most important thing. Dr. Zentmeyer, you shared that that was a high value of the board a meeting or two ago, so thank you for that. Dr. Zentmeyer, Dr. Sobine, board members, my name is Roger Stendersen, and I'm a recovering middle school principal. I am about 20 years into my recovery, and it's going very well, thank you very much. I am also a retiree of Washington County. I served in four middle schools here as principal and three others as assistant principal. It was a wonderful career, and I highly value it. After my retirement, for five years, I was working with Towson University's Educational Leadership Program, and then I got a real bonus, a little closer to home, Hood College, Director of Educational Leadership. Along the way, I crossed paths with several folks that work here at the central office and out in Washington County schools. Also, two neighboring superintendents, both in Frederick County and in Waynesboro, were graduates of the Hood College doctoral program in organizational leadership, which I had the good fortune to be a part of developing. I mention all that because I know a couple of things about leadership, and I think it's very important to include your subordinates in your decisions. Otherwise, it's a separated decision, and nobody has ownership. That's why the communication's important. Sir, you mentioned earlier that you noticed the absence of this policy on public presentation from the agenda tonight, and that tells me that you're reconsidering and you're considering carefully, and I thank you for doing that. You've heard tonight from some folks that needed to express some concerns. My concern is that you make time available for people to be heard earlier, for you to have folks speak after you've made decisions, introduces the notion of a ready-fire-aim procedure into Washington County Board of Ed. And I don't think that's wise. It's also not logical because you should collect all the data, and although some data is not pure, some of it's biased, who doesn't want data to make the best possible decision, as I heard you say earlier in the meeting, Dr. Zentmeyer? So I urge you to move the public input time earlier, and I would also ask if it is possible for you to remove any other barriers. For example, I know some folks will have difficulty signing up a day in advance. If that's possible, I urge your reconsideration of that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ethan Lowen, and when the, when the parents were speaking earlier about the absolute tragic level of chronic violence, that is basically robbing their children of their childhood, that's something that's been going on for a while. We all know that. I mean, I, it's gotten to the point where, starting three years ago, I've had teachers use the phrase with me that they don't understand entirely how a functioning society is coming out of what our children are experiencing in the schools. And that, they'd never said that before. They'd been talking about how it's been getting worse for many years, but never that until three years ago. Maybe, I thought, it was a COVID thing and it would get a little bit better. No, they're still saying the same thing, and here they are, parents, saying the same thing. And they've been coming here for years saying it, too. And one thing is, is that the reason that it's happening, there's number, there's a number of reasons, but one reason is because of policies that are followed in the public schools. Policies around, as one of the previous Teachers Union Board members said last year, that it just, it's unfortunate. It would be, it would be an injustice to the child, the chronically violent child, to take them out of the school and put them in, like the Antietam Academy that this county has had for many years. And you can talk to prior graduates of Antietam Academy, saying, "Yep, I ended up there because what I was like in school, and it did me a lot of good." But that's not the policy that the Teachers Union has. And so, you know, the, it's gotten to a critical point, but I, what I want to point out is it's not just people locally that are saying it, it's not just people in all the surrounding counties that are saying it. What it is, is that it's also being said by our state leaders in an odd sort of a way, and it came out in this last legislative session. You know, I've pointed out that when this budget came out, that the governor himself referred to as, as a financial crisis, that it was, you know, because it's entirely because of the blueprint spending, right? The Teachers Union's blueprint spending plan. We're $3 billion in deficit, well, $3.8 billion is being added to blueprint every year, entirety of the deficit, year after year. And, and what it is, is that I said at the beginning, a couple of months ago, I said, "You know, the pensions in the state are at risk." To the best of my knowledge, I'm the only person who publicly looked, who looked at this budget and publicly said, "Oh, by the way, the pensions are at risk." Well, three things happened to the pensions that the, that they did in Annapolis. One is, they cut what they called "extra pensions." Also, they cut payments going to retiree healthcare, which is really a cut to pensions, you know. But the other thing they did, which was the most shocking of all, is they took the teachers' pensions only and sent them down to the counties to be financially responsible for. Now, why was that? Because that actually was done by the Legislative Services Office, which is a group of state bureaucrats. In other words, the fellow pensioners of this state looked at the teachers and said, "We are going, that our pensions are at risk. We're going to put you in a situation where you're going to feel it first if this is what we're really going to go down, this financial crisis," as the governor himself described it. And the question is why? Why were the teachers selected? They were, clearly. There was no financial reason, no mathematical reason why. I think the reason is pretty clear. Because what happened is, two days before that recommendation by the state bureaucrats was made, the governor tried to have a meeting, a joint session meeting in Annapolis about the fact that blueprint doesn't work. What is blueprint? Blueprint is what is so much tied in with all the, the undealt with issues, behavioral issues, can't be dealt with under blueprints policies because they have these alternative forms that are infinitely impossibly expensive. And so, when he tried to have that meeting, to have that discussion, he was shut down. He was shut down by the superintendents that showed up. He was shut down by the fellow delegates, right? Two days later, "Oh, let's send the teachers' pensions down to the counties." I think it's this, because I don't think it's a mystery. I think it kind of lines up well, is that the financial crisis is caused entirely by the blueprint. The blueprint is entirely caused by the Teachers Union's policies. The only thing that's going to stop it is if the teachers choose to elect different leaders to have a different political view. How about not having a political view? But the teachers need to make that choice. That's the point. Thank you for your time.
First, I want to say thank you to everybody who came, and your viewpoints were so well-presented and so backed up. Thank, I can't thank you enough for coming. I can't. Other comments from board members for public comment, not your in-comment?
To you all at Clear Spring, it sounds like what is happening up there is unacceptable, and doing it the way we've always done it has to change, and I think that's what people were voting for when they voted this last cycle, was change. And, and so I apologize that you're having to deal with that. Young man, I apologize to you that, that you're having to deal with what you're dealing with up there. You know, a lot of times I've heard people say, and I'll be honest, I've said it, that when it comes to foster care, that the problem originates with the parents at home, that it's in the home. For us, we can't control what happens in the home, but we can control what's happening here in the school. And so to me, that's just an excuse. And a very wise man once told me that an excuse is a lie in disguise. And when you think about that, it's so true. When we try to come up with an excuse, usually it's a, it's a lie that we're just trying to get out of something. And so we, as a board, need to change our focus, and I know everyone sitting up here have, have heard the whole issue with behaviors in school. Anyway, I'll stop. I've probably run out of time, but know that we heard you tonight. I heard you. I'm sure the other board members heard you, and, and we got to do something different.
Any other comments down here on public?
I just want to say that I'm sorry. I have an eight-year-old daughter and an 11-year-old son, and I, I know that our schools are not running the way that they should be. I also know I'm an outsider. I'm not in school, and I don't know exactly the way that it's run, so I would like to ask the public to feel free to write me and tell me, is there a policy or something that we can look at to change? I need to know what is stopping us from making schools a better place. I have heard that Washington County has more red tape than what the state is giving us, so if you can help me and lead me in the direction of what we need to fix, I am all ears because it's not okay at all, and I'm sorry because I completely understand.
Just to echo what Ms. McCusker and Mr. Burkett were saying, I'm so terribly sorry that that is what your children are experiencing currently at Clear Spring, and that's what many children are experiencing in school currently. And I think that it's really, it's always really nice to hear the perspective of people who are actually in schools experiencing these things every single day, who see these things with their own eyes. And I know that Ms. Mowen hit on this earlier about how teachers are maybe scared to come forward with their voices, but I want to encourage any teacher watching to please come here with your experiences and come here with your suggestions and come here with your solutions because that's how this board can make change, and that's how this board can fully represent you and, and your concerns and how we can actually make a difference that is effective and is of the people. So thank you.
I would just like to address Mrs. Mowen's thoughts on board comments. A lot of times, and rightfully so, I've been in the opposite spectrum where I've been in the audience, and I'm not getting the answers back that I want to hear. But for the public, you've got to understand there's things that we hear and we aren't allowed to comment on. It could be a legal issue. Someone may have said, "We're going to sue you." We can't, we can't talk about it then as much as we want to, and we, we really do want to talk about it, but we have to abide by our legals. And when they say you just can't comment on it because it could pull you into it deeper, you don't, you don't have the information on the other side, so for you to comment on something and not have all of it, it puts us, and maybe the, the school system in jeopardy. So we've got to be very careful, you know, as an elected official, because we want to be able to hear both sides of a story when it comes to us, if, if we get pulled in to hear testimony. We just can't hear and then divulge that information out, and we, we know you want to hear that, but there's just times that we can't. So please understand that there'll be times when parents, teachers will stand there and go, "I want to, I want you to answer me." And we know things that we can't divulge, and it's not because we don't want to, it's just that we're not allowed to at that time. So please try to understand that. It's just not something that we can do, and it's nothing that we don't want. We want to be able to provide as much information and discuss things out, but there are times that we're just very limited, so please understand that.
Any other public comment? I mean, comments in response to public comment.
Yeah, I, I will say that, you know, for the behavioral issues, this is something that's been a really big concern of mine for well over a year now, and one other thing that we did discuss in Policy Committee that I didn't bring up earlier is where we are looking at disciplinary issues, and we're looking at the policies that go along with it to Ms. McCusker's point, and we did have some extra staff in that usually don't come into these meetings to look at the discipline matrix and, and see what we can do. You know, to Charlie's point, you know, it's easy to make an excuse. You know, the state does have rules and laws on what we can't do, but they don't necessarily say what we can do, and that's where I think we need to really think a little more outside the box. And unfortunately, you know, the changing ways, changing, change of times, I guess you will, you know, it's very different than when I was in school compared to what, what you're dealing with now as teachers. So unfortunately, it's, those times do change a little quicker than what we're able to. So I do hope that we're able to look at the, at these policies in committee and make the necessary changes because I, I've been saying that for a couple of years now, we're, we're taking the least restrictive environment and making it the most restrictive environment when we allow these behavioral issues to, to persist. And, you know, that, that's one thing that I'm really hopeful that we're going to be able to go and, and correct for you very, very quickly, but just know that I don't know what those changes are, what the answers are. So, so please reach out to us. Any suggestions you have, please let us know. If it's something we can't do, it's, at least we urge you, and, you know, we, we at least are looking at options, so. are looking at options, so we truly appreciate it, and, and please don't give up on us. I know we won't give up on you, so thank you.
I also want to thank the people from Clear Spring for coming and bringing this to our attention. I agree with all of my colleagues, and I'm hopeful that we can provide some support for you. I also want to thank Mr. Stenderson for his comments and for his service to Washington County Public Schools. And I, I agree with you. I think not only should public comment be moved, but also I'd like to see our meetings moved back to 6:00 PM so more people could attend. So I would hope that we could discuss this again and, and maybe make that happen. Thank you. Which brings us to more comments. Daphne, let's start with you. Do you have any closing comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to introduce all of you and everybody watching, too, on the newly-elected student member of the Board for the 2025-2026 school year. She's sitting right over there. Her name's Nora Murphy. Yep, she's a junior currently at Tech High, and I'm so excited to have her as my successor. She's a great person. I've known her for the entirety of my high school career now, and I trust that she will do this job justice. So thank you, Nora, and thank you for all of you guys for making my time on the Board such a wonderful experience.
Thank you, Daphne.
I just would like to point out that April is Child Abuse Awareness Month, and if you are aware of a child who's being abused, you have an obligation to call Child Protective That number is 800-917-7383, or you can call 911 and make them aware of the situation.
I just want to say congratulations, Nora. I was here for, when you guys held the election, so we look forward to working with you in the future.
I'd like to say congra-- Excuse me. Congratulations to our fellow Board member who had a baby, and she has, she's not been here for the last two meetings. Tori had a baby boy, Van Clark. So if she's watching, congratulations to her and the family, so we miss you, and I know she wants to be here as soon as she can, so we're just happy for her and her family.
Well, I want to thank everybody again, but I just want to say happy 14th birthday to my youngest grandson, Evan.
I got about three more, three more times before he's my age now. Yeah, so Saturday, I had the opportunity to go to the Maryland Theater to enjoy the Once Upon a Mattress play that our Biswa students put on, and as always, it was impeccable with nothing but perfection, so congratulations to the students and staff who put that on, and, and I think a lot of people forget about the parents who need to make sure they're available to make sure the kids can practice late and, and all that good jazz. So, so excellent job, as always. And then one other thing that I would like to bring up, so I am a member of the Antietam Exchange Club here in town, and Mr. Burkett, to, to your point, one of the things we focus on is child abuse prevention, so I appreciate you bringing that up. But every Thursday morning, we go to Applause Catering for breakfast, and, you know, it's, I always say, it's our old man club, it's, there's a couple ladies in there, but for the most part, it's a bunch of old bald white guys like me. And, you know, we get to go there and, and talk about what's happened in the community, and do our best to help out where we can. And a couple, about a month or so ago, tragically, the owner of Applause Catering passed away, and very unexpected, phenomenal human being, someone that is always, that will always be known as, as a friend of the community, not by what she did for work or pay, but, but by what she did for the community. And her name was Angie Rollins, and I found out shortly after she passed away that she is the daughter of Ruth Ann Monroe, who obviously we have our elementary, our primary school named after her, so it just, it was very, very eye-opening hearing about that. You know, we have these, these schools that, you know, community members have been named after, and a lot of times, we forget who the people are that, that they're named after. So I encourage everyone, you know, you have Ruth Ann Monroe Primary School, you have Emma K. Daub, and, and all these other schools. I encourage people to just go back and, and see who these people were and, and what they did for the community, because, you know, who knows? We, our current students may have a school named after them as well.
We've been very busy the past month. In March, we celebrated our newest ESP of the year, Charles Bell, had a joint, joint meeting with the commissioners. I was able to read at Williamsport Elementary and answer some really deep questions posed by Erica Jansen's Innovate Ed class, and budget, 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 and then a little more budget. April started with the Envirothon, and wow, was it wet, but it was really still fun and educational. Tomorrow, we celebrate our Teacher of the Year, and on Thursday, we'll enjoy celebrating our reading tutor apprentices at a banquet. And then on to congratulate our retirees, celebrate our seniors, and cry very happy tears as they walk across the stage. So my takeaway for tonight, winner, winner, chicken dinner, or fish dinner, as the case may be. When I was a kid, McDonald's was new, but they had a problem during this week. Sales on Friday were down, especially this week. The owner of McDonald's in Cincinnati had an idea, fish sandwiches. However, McDonald's founder, Ray Kroc, had his own idea, hula burgers, which would be a slice of pineapple with cheese on a bun. They decided to sell both of them, and on Friday, to see which came out on top. The clear winner, 360 to 6, was the fish filet. So what's my point? We have problems, and we need to brainstorm some solutions. We need to meet, to act on those posed solutions to the problems we have. So I need to know what your next winner, winner idea is. I need you to address the topics that we wrestled with tonight and let us know. It isn't just about me, or the Board, or even Dr. Sovine, or the wonderful team we have. I've seen how, if you put two people together in a room who are affected by something, they can generate ideas that will help us solve problems. So happy Easter, and may your spring break be safe, happy, and relaxing. Dr. Sovine, you have anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. I just wanted to take this mo, this opportunity to thank all of our citizens that came out to engage in public comment. We are a learning organization that's committed to continuous improvement, and it's through your feedback, both positive and constructive, that we can work to improve our overall organization. To our citizens and parents that came out from Clear Spring, I, I empathize with you. Certainly disheartening to hear some of the experiences described, and our team, both school-level and central office team, are committed to improving learning experiences of all students. We will have team members follow up with you to provide additional supports, so we thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.